The Bellevue Idaho. City of Bellevue, Idaho, Monday, March tenth, twenty twenty five. City Council meeting, five thirty, I'm following the meeting to order. Just a reminder, um, please turn off all cell phones except for emergency personnel if you're in City Hall. And mute your uh self if you are on Zoom, um, until your head is raised and you're called upon. Amy Lee, please do be role call.
Mayor Dervani?
Yes.
Council President Shay?
Present.
Councilmember Mahoney?
Yes. Can hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay.
Here, yes. Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Number of them?
Yes.
Tom breaking his accent.
Okay, thank you. Notice of agenda compliance, finding that the regular meeting notice and agenda were posted in accordance with Idaho Code seventy four dash two zero four. Within forty eight hours prior to the meeting at the City of Bellevue City Hall, Post Office and on the city's website on March sixth, twenty twenty five.
I'm making motion that. Notice was posted in accordance with scriptures.
Scriptures seventy four two. Give me a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Um, call for conflict, um, as outlined in Idaho Code seventy four dash four zero four, um. Calls for conflict.
I have none.
Okay. Mayor and council report, let's start with the council, is there anything for anyone to report on council?
Uh, I I spoke with Lindsay Malino today and she confirmed she'll put it on the agenda for the clean, for the clean suite. Collaboration on waiting fees again, um, but we'll just need confirmation on that from the commissioners and. More details to come about larger items.
Okay.
Yeah, to remove on clean sweep day.
Great.
Yeah.
Any other council updates?
Can I ask, I know it was, I wasn't at the last meeting. But did anyone? And I don't know if we could ask later on when. The public works director is making up. Uh, update, but did anyone follow up or look into the requirements for the RV? Dump station at the new Maverick.
Um, Brian, go ahead.
Uh, right, park community director, uh, Maverick has submitted their water and sewer permit application. I transmitted it to Chris and Bryce Melworth, our water and sewer contractor. Uh, got some comments back from them and uh will be.
So, and I just wanted to ask for clarification because an RV dump station was separate from sewer. Like what's required by the, by Idaho. Uh, that I saw by Idaho Department of um Public Health and in DEQ. They require of it to be separate. From a sewer.
I'm gonna put this on pause and then, no, it's okay, we, we are going to be discussing uh the hydrant meter. And I feel like if we want to bring the conversation back up, let's bump it back to that part of the agenda. Okay, wonderful. Um.
Just one other question that um comprehensive plan, is, can we have a little bit more time on that? It's a big.
How you feeling about that, Brian?
Oh. Yeah, I think you could push up.
Let me, we're gonna have a meeting tomorrow, um, with our department heads about um the strategic plan and the timeline.
Okay.
So if you will give us till tomorrow afternoon, let's get back to just, I just want to make sure we're not bumping it too far down. Our timeline of when we want to get on the agenda, so let's say tentatively yes, but let me confirm with you.
Okay.
To- tomorrow after we meet with department heads.
Okay, and I would second that because it's an important mess. This is a lot of stuff to consider.
Yeah.
Especially if.
He did give him a month heads up, so I will give him that, but I totally understand in terms of timing all that, but let me get back to you tomorrow on that. Okay. And then just a bit of a mayor update, um. Uh, are we, our community services manager that we've hired, um, Kristen Geerhead is in full swing. Um, she's taken over kind of the external communications at the newsletter. Jessica Obenoff has been doing great with getting the ERC event that. To, you know, helped spring to a larger scale last year back online for this year. And we'll engage Kristen in that as well, um, and I, I appreciate, and I think Tammy, you and maybe building thrift will be engaged in that one as well, so. Um, spring is coming, great events are coming up. Um, Brian, are you comfortable with me giving an update about the grant?
Yeah.
Okay, um, the grant that we applied for through the Blue Cross, um. And the name of that grant was, it's the community. Community project grant, um, we were awarded that grant on Friday in the, in the amount of eighty five thousand. Dollars, so that'll be a really exciting project, it'll be uh. For this year and we'll have a lot of community involvement in there, so um. Really looking forward to the next steps on that, a meeting will be happening, happening this week. And expect a further update at the next city council meeting and in the newsletter about what that will all entail, so just, that's a, a recent update, so. That's what I have for the mayor update, um. I'll move forward to item number four, public comment, um, this is for items of a concern not on the agenda. Uh, please limit your comments three to five minutes, so at this time I will open public comment. Um, so if anyone has public comment, please raise your hand inside City Hall or raise your hand on Zoom. Okay, seeing none and hearing none, um, I will go ahead and close public comment. Moving on to item five, the consent agenda. So here we have approval of minutes, approval of claims and department head reports. Open it up for.
I have a question on the claims.
Okay.
Shelley?
Yes, ma'am. On page one, uh, item, it's under the first uh heading under DL Evans mayor, the subscriptions.
First heading, are you looking at class or vendor?
Uh. By class.
Okay.
Page one.
What the problem?
Two, two, zero, two, five specifically.
What is the question?
The, my question is, uh, the subscriptions for Zoom, Microsoft, T-Sheets, new website. Um, that's. That's not a monthly expense, or is it?
No, all of those are monthly.
They are, okay.
Yes.
All right.
And it will grow as soon as we're active and so.
Okay.
Significantly.
Is that something that we budgeted for?
We did not.
Larger discussion for a later date, okay, thank you.
So now, but what weren't some of the technologies like Microsoft and Zoom and all that budgeted for, or?
All of these, yes. T-sheets will be replaced, um, and um. Quickbooks will go down significantly, a lot of these charges were actually new website charges. But the way that credit card has been done in there, um. I put all this in there for you, so at least you had that information, um, it doesn't itemize out.
Okay.
So. That's something I got, I'd like to look at maybe changing in the future.
Okay, yeah, all right, thank you very much.
Do you think some of the items were budgeted, were just swapping and changing?
Yes.
What they were.
Yes.
What they were budgeted.
Yeah.
It just was a.
But that is ongoing monthly, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on planes minute or department head reports? And just, just a reminder that our department heads aren't here, so it is an opportunity to ask some questions about the reports, um. This is kind of your floor to have a dialogue, um, they have prepared these for you to digest and. Chat with them about if needed.
Right. What's that thermal image camera? We can.
Those are heat cameras or handheld camera. Um, that we can find hot spots or. You know, people or.
Animals.
Oh, sorry. I also have a question for you and I know it's not in your uh update, but I had a question about the. The structure that burned on Main Street and is there any plan for exam or?
Uh.
Anything that you're aware of?
Fire department does.
Understood.
We. I don't.
I just wondered if like there was still an investigation happening or.
Or Brian.
I've talked to Brian.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, we were.
Just kind of an eternal nuisance.
The investigation is closed.
Or, yeah, or. Yeah.
Is there any requirement saying that you know of Brian for, because typically for structures like that. They can only stand if an investigation is over like. I don't know, all that material just sitting there, what it does to the environment.
I will need to check in with our building official.
Okay.
You know, this is a good one, option maybe available.
Okay.
I thought I saw a report somewhere that the, the people on the property were planning on demoing, but I don't know. Where that went, I just saw that impacted stuff.
I guess I was just thinking in terms of the entire world coming through Bellevue here in the next. Two weeks that it would be nice to kind of dress up Main Street a little bit, but.
City could always send them a letter. You know.
Are we gonna lay our bodies out there flat so they don't crumble and rumbles too tight?
Yeah.
Is there anything actionable you'd like to see on that, or?
Uh, I, uh, not at this time.
Okay.
Thank you for asking.
It would, it would be nice if we could check with the building inspector because just like having trash or broken down vehicles and. I think that that, I mean, it's would still fall under some purview where you can't just leave a. A burned down structure, partial structure, you're saying there, as just as stated, it is as an attractive nuisance.
So, Brian, if you wouldn't mind, reach out to building and then if, if it necessitates a letter or something like that, we'll, we'll take action on it. Okay, thank you. Anything else on the consent agenda you guys would like to discuss?
I don't have anything else.
Okay, then I would take a motion at this time. Oh, thank you.
Uh, I would move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
On the bench.
Yes.
To me?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Obenoff?
Yes.
Okay, so let's move on to item number six, this is a category request for funds. Um, these are all coming from public work, so we'll just start them line by line, um. Item A, request for funds for the purchase of a hydrant meter with a backflow preventer in the amount of three thousand five hundred and seventy six dollars and ninety five cents. For the water department, um, this comes as um. Direction was given to the public works director to look into this, to have a. Uh, metering, hydrant metering uh solution for our bulk water um hookups within. Town, um, and so, um. Chris, do you wanna present, present anything on this, or?
No, it's pretty much uh plain and simple, it's just a stand one device that's uh prefabricated together, um. Shane Garrison, I built one together where he got the individual pieces to build, um, but this is. Pre-bas, all ready to go and you don't have to worry about testing or. Or anything up when we assemble it.
May I ask how this holds up in the snow and is it something easy someone can back into?
Our current, um. Our current uh water permit is supposed to go from April into September fifteenth or September thirtieth. So this will be removed in the winter time.
Oh, okay.
Unless we amend the permit, but at this time.
But and then, then it will be put on for the day of use and then taken off at night and drained.
Okay.
And um, there was discussion about having two different fill stations or, or bulk water stations, but. Uh, this is the price for, for one item at this time, so if we deem that we'd like a second one, we can purchase, but. Chris presented us the one at this time.
I think if we do need a second one, it'd be a large situation like a Carmelone or a larger developer coming in. And they can purchase it for us and um.
Yeah, and that would be more for like a continuous or multiple hookup session, right? Okay.
This will solve our issue.
This will. A step in the right direction and Tammy to fill you in too, the next steps will also be, um, there's a review of the backflow ordinance and the permit that's happening. But, you know, with the way that things take time to purchase and order and the season coming upon us where we see most of our bulk. Water usage happening, we felt it was relevant to bring this uh for approval sooner rather than later. Knowing that there's other steps coming in terms of the permit and the ordinance that will, that will be seen.
And, and public awareness about it, so that.
The fire department sees one of those, they're not gonna, you know, go.
It's easy.
Take it from the guy and, you know, then Haley does up. A few of those for certain situations, um, we, we've. Used about the airport when we've had contractors and whatnot. You know, they, they work well, you know, you got a little kickstand and, you know. Kind of contained, it's not gonna.
We have any other questions on this?
I'm making motion, we approve funds for the purchase of a hydrant meter with a backflow. Preventer in the amount of three thousand five hundred seventy six dollars and ninety five cents for the water.
Second.
It seems. Standing by.
Yes.
Councilmember Mahoney?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Upstairs.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Obenoff?
Yes.
Moving on to item B, request for funds for the purchase of snow top, snow plus tires. For the leased loader in the amount of fourteen thousand five hundred and sixty nine dollars and twenty six cents for the streets department. Um, Chris, do you wanna just give us a little bit on this?
So our newest loader, when it was purchased with uh by the, or ordered by the city administrator at the time, um. Never really got consulted on the proper tires and some of the, uh, especially items that we wanted with it, um. Right now it has basically street or warehouse tires on it, so when we're moving snow, um, traction can be an issue. Um, it should have had these snow plus tires to begin with. Um, when the lease is expired here in another four years, uh, we do have to turn it back in with at least fifty percent cut on the tires. So we're going to put the snow plus tires on it while we use it, um, store. The current tires and then when we go to turn it back in, we'll return those tires onto the vehicle and we'll have a set for the next lease.
Are snow plus tires like year round tires or only for the winter?
No, they can be used year round, but they just, um. About seven hundred dollar install to take the tires on and off and, um. We don't want to take them on and off all the time and trade them out, so the snow plus are the best for year round, especially with some of our gravel roads and getting up into. Um, the canyon and letting down and picking up plant where they have gravel and stuff, so there's an all around better tire, um, we have it on. The loader, or sorry, the grader, and we have it on the other loader and they don't seem to have issues for traction as much as the new one does. It's mainly just a safety thing for our guys as well as, um, you're moving a large piece of equipment, icy roads trying to move snow at night and trying to. Keep your head on a swivel, you start sliding, um, if you put them in a position where damage to equipment or damage, I'm not probably shopping.
Any questions on the, the tires?
Was this budgeted for in the, in the?
You beat me to it.
I, was this budgeted for in the, this current cycle?
No.
Not for the specific item, but we do have a vehicle maintenance budgets that should cover it.
If you use that much of the vehicle maintenance budget, what about vehicle maintenance for the rest of the year?
Well, I think, let's start with a question, do you recall how much is in the vehicle maintenance budget?
No, I, I printed water to wastewater and I didn't print streets, I apologize, trying to be prepared for these, so. You know, we can maneuver money, you know, depending on what we spend more or less in within the street's budget. Um, and so we just have to look and see where we end up, if we have to, um, toward the end of the year, we end the budget.
I was wondering, um, just with, I'm sure. As the roads continue to decay, we could actually lose Tammy on your way home. Um, you know, just from the snow or what have you, is, is it possible that. Why you need those ta- tires as this winter comes to a close, if this amount was better put towards those free repairs? You know, no good deed goes unpunished, so the, um. The very effective snow removal had, you know, has a cost on the roads because the roads are, so is there, is there any. Consideration of using these funds instead and throwing it to, towards road patching? And, and re, and budgeting for the fall so that you have the snow tires. And using this money for that.
Amount of uh road mix and everything. Will be a paltry sum, using fifteen thousand dollars, it wouldn't even make a dent, um, on what we actually need for uh street repairs. Our streets have no oil on, what's been happening is the frosties have been pushing it up, especially here in the last two weeks where it was getting. Forty fifties in the, in, in the daytime and then dropping below twenty again at night, and so as frosties come up and then they break apart. And then as the runoff comes down the road, it's just taking all that out, all that gravel with it, you can see it's worse on. Maldine Canyon, um, right there at Quarter Horse, um. Elm, if you look at Sixth and Elm, it's terrible there, um, he, most of, most of Elm has chunks where it's just frosty out and. Um, once it dries out enough, we're gonna do the best with the equipment and with the supplies we have, but. Um, you know, these tires from another retailer were over twenty thousand dollars, we found it had a. About five thousand dollars cheaper than the first couple kids, so we don't know what the tires are gonna cost.
Can I ask if the streets repairs come out from a different part of the budget though, correct? Like the, the funding for repairing streets and that's currently budgeted for at this time.
Correct.
So we're not, so this amount isn't taking from the currently budgeted portion for repairing streets, correct?
No, I just was, uh, Shelley was mentioning that, you know, things sometimes can be moved around and if there was a material value in it. Um, but just a consideration.
So you, Chris, your concern with the, with delaying would be the potential increase in the cost of tires later in the year.
I think anything that we're gonna see in the next year that has parole in base like tires, we're gonna see it's gonna have to increase. Here on the next second quarter.
Uh, just for clarification, in the um, non-winter months, what is the loader used for?
Moving uh road mix around, um. You have to ask Casey for a little bit, I, I, I don't know what all they use it for, but uh parks maintenance, we use it for moving the woodchips around. Um, different things down at the preserve, trying to get different supplies down there, um, moving trash around. And then picking up your uh tree debris.
Thank you.
I guess I would like a little more, it's not, it's a, that's a substantial amount of, I guess, it's a substantial amount of money. And I just want to make sure, I don't know what's in that budget and I know we can move some things around, but I want to make sure that we're. We don't have any other things coming down the pipe that, if, if this could be put off. I mean, can it be put off for even two weeks till our next meeting so that we could review what's in that line item and just look at it, since. The season is coming to an end as far as the snow goes, so if this isn't expedited purchase, something's not broke. I just.
And Shelley, it would be helpful to have, like, when there are requested money to have the budget to reference where we're at. Because just looking at this, you know, kind of blindly, rather than having to go back, it would be great to know where we're at currently to reference.
I will have my treasures reported the next meeting. And yes, um, I will take that into consideration, the last two weeks have been.
Nobody's.
Yeah, I was entertaining all day today, so.
Yep.
Um.
And just for clarification, um, the treasurer's report is happening once a month at the end of each month.
Yes, because I just received the LGIP statement of, um, today.
Something you could also consider doing is, um, when I am organizing the agendas, if it's not time sensitive, we could. Try and also line it up a little bit more with treasurer's reports too, to have a better vision, so that's good feedback, so thank you.
Bye.
Do you have a sense of the service life left on the tires around now? Um, they're probably about, uh. Eighty-five percent or better, I mean, they're, they're fine right now, but, um. I just think, we've seen it in the past where we have failed to order something or get it in a timely fashion and then. Um, like one was the uh, back in COVID, we didn't get the uh valve exerciser, it was a fifty thousand dollar machine at the time. Now it's well over ninety five thousand dollars and you're not gonna get one, so. I just don't want to see us delay for no reason when we do have money and budget for it, um, we do have a plan to. Replace the tires and make sure that we do have adequate ones for the next year.
I didn't, I mean, I'm not aware of the plan to replace the tires and, and the reason is really for two weeks, just. So it's not, I'm not gonna wait five years and say it's the end of, it was not unreasonable to just say, review that and. But that's my, only my opinion, everybody else can vote, so.
I, I, I have, I share that same opinion, I'd like to uh continue this item. Uh, to the next meeting, which is.
Which one?
March twenty fourth.
Yes.
I would, I'm making that motion to continue this to March twenty four.
A second.
Um, councilmember Obenoff?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Mahoney?
Yes.
Council President Shay?
Yes.
Okay. So just to wrap that up, I think the direction is, uh.
For more information.
Chris, just having that, just that budget information, um, anything else that you guys were seeking for more information? Would you like anything from Basie from Streets?
Um, I mean, I know that about purchasing. Oh, tires and such, and understand that, no, I just think it's.
Budgetary information is what we'd like to see.
Our complete picture.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay, moving on to item C, request for funds. For the purchase of sensors, meters, pumps and motors for the wastewater treatment plant in the amount of sixteen thousand three hundred eighty one. And five thousand three hundred and twenty five dollars and seventy two cents. Um. Chris, am I, um, speaking out of turn by saying, um. This money you're bringing, these are all things that will be covered?
These all be covered by our insurance plan.
Okay, so if you want to present this item, and I just want to make sure that information was aware.
So we've, we've replaced the majority of the pumps and waters down in the basement, uh, we still have a couple of ones that we're looking at are the, uh. Water activated sludge, the wad pumps, um, they're on the floor and they were just, uh. We pulled apart, um, there's too much corrosion and too much dust, we need to get them, um, replaced. And then as we have the electricians in there, um. All our sensors, um. Are all corroded and rotted out and we cannot repair them, so there's, um, probably about. Twenty, thirty different sensors that'll, you know, keep temperature, keep flow rates, um. The variety of paths that they monitor and keep the plant in operation and. We need to replace all of them.
So in your packet, you have, um, kind of two different line items, but they're for the same thing, so I put them together, so sorry if that was confusing in terms of. Supporting information, but.
And this may sound like a, a, a silly question to ask, but these things are, because they're part of our, the. The claim would be reimbursed by the insurance or covered by insurance, they are part of the plan that the engineer has detailed. That this should be done and these things should be replaced, it's part of like what's going on that needs to be done.
Yes, uh, without, without these parts, we cannot get the plant in operation, they failed due to, um, circumstances that happened down there.
Mm-hmm.
Um. It will be covered by, we've put in the plan for our electrical bed, we'll have to put in a second claim for. It will be covered by, we've put in the plan for our electrical bed, we'll have to put in a second claim for. Some of these pumps, motors and installing and stuff that we're going back through and as we're finding more and more stuff that's broken, you know, where damage. They're irreparable, non-reparable, um. We'll we'll have a second list that'll be done before I come to review um with the receipts.
And so this is an open, like is it, it's an open claim right now because of that? Okay.
We still have to, we have to get the plant back, the electrical back in operation, then we can start testing to make sure that. All the pumps and motors are running, then all the sensors are working properly, and then we can get the um membranes. Bring them online and start actually using the plant.
So correct me if I'm wrong, but just to follow up on your question, um, all the steps you're taking, nothing's being re-engineered. It's been. Uh, basically replaced or put back online the way that it was originally engineered and planned.
Yeah, it's closest, we're trying to do a one for one swap for every part. That's what the ICRM said that we had to do. We had to bring it back online one for one. Some of those parts are outdated and no longer um. No longer available, so we're finding the closest thing um that will match up to that part um, but I knew our model.
Thank you.
Cool, thank you.
Any other questions on this?
Is there a document that we're following for all of this? A project plan, a functional spec for the work that we could see or not?
As of right now, it's basically the contractors and the electricians are going in there and as they're ripping out the wires and they're identifying. Um, we've had lists and we made lists of all the different sensors that we did need to order, um. But it's basically part for part that we're, you know, and there is no schematics other than the original design plans that we're making sure that. Maybe we're getting the right parts and the right size of pumps and motors and make sure we're getting the horsepower that we need.
So following the original design plan.
Yeah, so I would say the the, from what I understand to be, the plan is the original. Engineered plan of how it was built before it went down.
Cause that's why we have. Modifications other than if something's broken, we're fixing it. If there's a piece, a chunk of pipe that needs to be replaced because they use galvanized instead of plastic. Or instead of uh, we're saying steel, we're making sure we have the right stuff in there so we don't have an accident again.
I make a motion that we approve, you know, purchase, there were extra funds for the purchase of sensors, meters. Pumps and motors for the wastewater treatment plant and the amount of. The sixteen thousand three hundred and eighty-one and five thousand three hundred twenty-five dollars and seventy-two cents.
Second.
Yes.
Council member Mahoney?
Yes.
Um, council member Reed?
Extend.
Council member Davis?
Yes.
Council member Ovina?
Yes.
I just asked, and I'm sure you have to have it, a detailed list of of sensors, meters, pumps and motors. That are being purchased with this twenty-one thousand dollars. That's more than we need these things.
It's included, but are more details than what's included in your document?
Yeah, I I see just the five thousand.
And then previous, flip one back, that core and main has the sixteen.
I thought the sixteen was four, oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay, that's what I was saying is I'm sorry they're broken out, but they're for the same, yeah, sixty, so that has it all broken down.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, we are moving on to item number seven, new business. Um, I just want to uh have an overarching uh introduction to this section here. Um, we're looking at um our city ordinance of our. Bellevue City Code Title Three, Chapter Two, uh, Sections Three and Eight. Um, and then we're also in the next section going to. Um, in B and C, review um licenses for alcohol, uh alcohol service. Um, in the process of fixing some of our foundational uh ways that things are happening at City Hall and accountability. Um, I have been reviewing code and ordinances and making sure at the city level, we are compliant with our own cords and code and ordinances. Um, and I did find flaw in how we have been approving our alcohol licenses or not doing the correct process and procedure. So um, what you're seeing tonight is uh bringing forward. The information the way that it is supposed to be done as written in our code. Um, and I can reference that a little bit more when we get to B or C, but um, like to start with item A, um. And this is an addition of language um to our Resort Cities Restaurant. Um, licenses, uh, that that particular section of the ordinance that we have previously approved that set. Um, service hours, um, it's the addition of a line which is in uh the state legislation. Um, that says no business holding a Resort City Restaurant Liquor License shall promote or operate the restaurant as a bar and lounge. Um, that's the addition in three dash two dash eight. I'm I'm referencing page forty-three in our packet, just so everyone's aware. Um, that's the ordinance changes I'm referencing. So that is um part of the state legislation and we wanted to bring over into our uh. City code, so it's very um prevalent and uh those who are. Seeking to hold a Resort City Restaurant Liquor License are aware of the state and now our um city ordinance that. Uh, creates separation between our legacy licenses and um the special category of Resort City Restaurant Liquor Licenses. The intention of these licenses are for restaurants to have a value add service of being able to serve liquor. Um, the intention is not for these, for restaurants to uh promote or operate as bars and lounges. Um, that is reserved as a right of a legacy license, not of a Resort City Restaurant Liquor License. Um, and then the other uh modification to the ordinance would be in uh Section Three. Dash two um dash three. Um, this is in alignment with um the Marshals. Uh, one of his strategic objectives for this year was to um increase education around alcohol service. And provide um alcohol education courses for licensed holders within our city. Um, please correct me if I'm wrong, but um, uh, the majority of the infractions are. What that we're seeing within our county in general has has to do around alcohol related. Issues.
Alcohol plays a very large um part in all of the activity that we deal with. Um, and specifically for the city of Bellevue area, um, we've. Overservice has been a major issue. And I would like to make sure that people are educated on what to look for so that we're limiting that.
So coming at it a little bit, uh, you know, from our public safety lens of if we can uh do more education to. Make ensure that education is happening on the business owner's side, um, could we then mitigate some of the problems that? We're seeing spill out kind of into the community from there. So the amendment, or sorry, the the change that ordinance would be, I'll read light and I'm item C. Um, the applicant slash business owner for a license shall be required to attend an alcohol awareness training. Approved by the Bellevue Marshall prior to the issuance or renewal of any city issued liquor, beer and or wine license. The train shall be attended in person with the Bellevue Marshall's office or online with the state, the Idaho State Police. Proof of attendance is required and shall be kept on file by the city clerk. So I will, I'll open that for questions now.
And is there anything, so if you pull someone over, and I don't, each state is different. And so if they said, I was at such and such place, would that, does that place get a fine or? Does their liquor license get taken away because I know in other places, it's a serious offense that.
So for overservice issues specifically, um. We normally submit our reports to ABC, which is Alcohol Beverage Control.
Okay.
And at that point, they will do an administrative review and if they deem it necessary, then they'll come in and do. Some form of an administrative uh fine. Or uh license review, things of that nature. Um, on the city side, we don't have that currently, but the state does and we communicate with ABC. Regularly on those incidences.
Would something like overservice um be grounds for a civic penalty? At this time, the way that code is written?
No, no, not through us.
Would it be uh grounds for review of revoking and or um suspending?
Grounds for suspending or or even revocation of the license from the state side potentially.
If we put this in the ordinance, just and there are no. Like for a renewal, if they don't come in and get the renewal, do we have to detail if there are any consequences that they?
If they don't get the train, then they don't get the. Before we, before we bring it even to you guys, they'll have to have that to me or. I won't bring it to council for even.
Consideration.
So will it be part of your job to audit that then? Who will be auditing?
City clerk?
Yes.
Yeah.
Right, so let's say they don't come, and then she says, hey, this person hasn't, you know, done this class. Then do you go there or is the letter sent to them and then what is it?
Well, come July is when our licenses are up.
Okay.
So they have, so every July, we know that we're going to be in the, you guys specifically are gonna be inundated with a bunch of renewal licenses. Most of the establishments are very good at being ahead of the game and getting everything into us. Um, and in the. License that they're going to have, if this is approved, that'll be stated on the license that you have to give us. Um, either come to the class or provide the IFB training. And once we have that, then that is put into the license packet that come to you.
So to to follow up on that, the um license application and the renewal application will have, will be augmented to have a section that. Um, reads that providing proof of this is required and. That's like providing uh proof of your sales tax or providing proof of your state and county licenses. So that'll be. Part of the complete um license application or renewal application package. And so if that is missing, approval won't happen or will not happen until that has been completed. So the uh. The checks and balances on that are in place already. We just need to kind of add it to that new applicant or add it to that application. Because that's how, you know, licenses are checked by clerk and department heads already. So we'll just maintain that process, but making sure it has that on the application.
Can I?
Yes, of course.
We have business licensing as part of our casel. So we may be able to have a a feel basically that that's, have they completed the requirements? So we have not set the business licensing up yet because our business licenses don't actually. Renew until next November, but as I understand, alcohol's coming up soon. We we tentatively have it set up in April to to get together about business licensing. So anything that might need to be incorporated in casel. Uh, if you will let me know, I can try to get casel set up as cus- cause things are customizable. Um, for us, yeah.
I guess the other question is, is since this is gonna take more like an administration process for the city. For someone being approved and having this class, are we charging them for that?
Or that has been part of the discussion.
Okay.
Um, I will let you know that the Idaho State Police class is free. Um, so that that's why that's in there as an option. Um, and there has been discussion between the marshal, myself and um Amy City Clerk. Uh, around charging a fee for the class. Um, I was of the opinion for the for it being a a new thing for the first year, um. Not charging um to encourage our class to be taken, um, because while the Idaho State Police Class online. Is a i- is a good course, it's it's not as robust as what the marshal would provide, which can focus a little bit more on our ordinances and. And can go into that a little bit more. The state doesn't cover Bellevue. The state just covers state. So um, my uh. Idea was it it would encourage more of the local class versus the state class. Um, but there has been discussion about um adding a fee for our class.
Amy or Marshall, how many do we currently have?
Those licenses?
Mm-hmm, that are selling.
I would.
Okay.
To give you an exact number.
South of twenty.
Yeah, fifteen-ish. Because. With this, I'm, we're even talking like Oasis.
Convenience stores.
All the convenience stores, Adkinsons. Anybody that sells any type of beer, wine or liquor.
How many hours would the class be?
Less than one. Oh, it'd be about an hour.
Oh, that's easy.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not looking to, to, you know, death by PowerPoint or anything like that.
Right, well, I think it is important because in the state of Idaho, it, from what I understand in the restaurants is that whoever the manager is. And or owner, they are the only ones required.
In the state of Idaho, nobody is required.
No one's required.
They're not.
No.
That's why I think that we need.
There's no education requirements.
Okay, so maybe that's just for the food handlers.
And that's one of the reasons I would really like to have this in our ordinance.
Got it.
Um, it, I think it'd be very beneficial. Very beneficial.
I think so too. Okay, that's all the questions I have.
Want to say that being a liquor owner, uh, I think this is a great deal. I think there, and it is a, the applications for new people coming in line with a resort. Licenses, they definitely need education. You know, I've been doing it for a long time. I know the ropes, but you know, it's 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 a good thing. So.
Thank you, Sean. Any other questions on this item?
No. Make a motion here?
Yes, and so this is a a two-parter. Um, it'd be a motion and then um the second part would be a consideration to wait the three readings. So, but we could start with.
I thought you do the wait the three readings first and then the motion.
Um, I apologize if I said it wrong, Rick. Yeah.
First you wait the three.
Okay.
Well, first you gotta read it three times unless you wait the three readings and then you wanna read it by.
Okay. Tammy, I get this one.
I make a motion, we read the three readings of ordinance number twenty twenty-five oh two. And read by title only.
Second.
Is that an oral paper or is it a roll call?
Council president Shay?
Yes.
Council member Mahoney?
Yes.
Council member Reed?
Yes.
Council member Davis?
Yes.
Council member Ovina?
Yes.
Did you want me to read it or you want?
Whoever would like to read it by title only.
Okay. Okay. An ordinance amending Bellevue City Code Title Three, Chapter Two, Sections Three and Eight. Adding the requirement of an alcohol awareness class for the applicant, business owner. Prior to any issuance or renewal of beer, wine or liquor licenses. And adding language prohibiting Resort City Restaurants from promoting or operating as a bar and lounge. Thank you. I make a motion that we accept for Bellevue City Ordinance. Number twenty twenty-five oh two, second.
Council member Ovina?
Yes.
Council member Davis?
Yes.
Council member Reed?
Yes.
Council member Mahoney?
Yes.
Council member Shay, president Shay?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Tammy. Line item B, so this is what I was referencing, um, moving forward, um, basically effective immediately. Um, all alcohol licenses, uh, new licenses will come bef- come to the council for review. Um, the process that's stated in our code is our marshal is to review um and make uh. A recommendation for approval of denial uh of licenses and. a recommendation for approval of denial, uh, of licenses, and then the license comes to council, uh, for review and approval or denial, um, this, the process of it coming to council for approval or denial, um, happens in every other city. And so I was wondering why Bellevue wasn't doing it and I, it was administrative error, and so now we are correcting that and we are reviewing as our code states, so. Um, our first, uh, license for review is Lilia's Market. Um, and they are applying for, um, beer, a beer-only license at their location of four oh one South Main Street. So, um, Marshall, if you wanna just give your review?
Yeah, my written report, I went through the data we received, I don't, I guess it was the day we received the application, the full start after, um, and did a site inspection. They actually had some, uh, beer on shelves already, getting ready for the ability to sell. Um, they had completely blocked off to include, um, signage on the the coolers, plus, um, something that you would actually have like a physical barrier to even get to those coolers, um, which I really liked to see. A lot of our places don't do things of that nature. Um, it is my recommendation that you approve their license, they went through all the hoops with the state and county prior to coming to us and they appear to be above board.
Any questions or discussion on this license?